... select board on this beautiful night of December 9th, 2019, we are at the Bennington Fire Facility. I'm Donald Campbell. I'm the chair of the board. I would like to ask our table to please introduce themselves and why don't we start on my far right, please, with the town manager?
Stuart Hurd, I'm the town manager.
Good evening, I'm Jeanne Connor.
Good evening, Bruce Lee Clark.
Jim Carroll.
Hello, Jeanne Jenkins.
Nancy Lively, Secretary.
Chad Gordon will not be with us tonight. Bill Scully is not here right now, but he will be joining us by phone for item number four on our agenda. So as is our tradition, we will start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance. Jeanne, would you be willing to lead us tonight, please?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our first order of business tonight is the consent agenda. This includes the minutes of November 25th and November 27th, the vicious dog hearing and the warrants as circulated. If you have any questions on the warrants that you have not already had a chance to ask the town manager about, now is the time to do that. So for the purposes of discussion, may I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda, minutes?
Can we pull out the November 27 minutes? I'll be abstaining from those.
Okay. So yes, you, Jeanne, will be, and Chad and Bill will also not at that meeting. Any other late break in addition? edits? No? Okay. In that case, all in favor of the consent agenda as circulated, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with the noted abstention of Jeanne, who will be accusing us of one item. The next order of business is public comment. This is a time of our meeting when we invite people to come speak to us about business of the select board and we would like to remind everybody that there will be no personal attacks, there will be no mention of personal accusations, and we ask you to keep your comments to under three minutes, please. The first person on this list is Sam Mercino. Please come up to the mic in the center if you would, please, Sam.
My center.
Thank you, sir.
(inaudible) I wish I could go over that one. I've got two subjects for recently, as you know, winter has come early in the town of Bennington and other areas, and I'm just asking the select board members if there's policy in place on snow removal once we get over a foot of snow. I've heard that there's no set policy on how snow is removed or when we do the auger in front of Main Street businesses or especially fire plugs. Most residents or it has been stated that residents are not required to dig out fire plugs, but they are, it would help, but I would think that we need to really kind of, not an ordinance, but it's suggested that if you know of a fire plug, adopt it and dig it out. We cannot put this burden on the town or fire department. I mean, I'm not asking people to hire somebody to shovel them out. We've got a lot of young enthusiastic people out there in Bennington to get a workout. We need to come together and start working as a community. My second thought or subject is, as you know, we've lost two businesses in the last few days. One is the Camelot Village and one I will not mention, but that also adds on to what has been lost as ever at Union Carbine. We've got a serious leak in Bennington, as you know, and I'm not putting the board, we've got to solve this problem. We've got Kmart that's been vacant for about a year. I mean, do you entice business to come in and find another business to fill that vacancy? I mean, we're not going to get a Target, we're not going to get, I don't know whether the business would go into that location except a job lot. I think it would fit well as far as that location. We have one in North Adams, we have one in Rockland, and people do travel those areas. Our tax dollars are going out of here, as you know, but you've got to create that want in Vermont and you can use that. You've got to create that lust for people to come here into this town. And two weeks ago, we talked about marketing. You know, you read over in Greenwich, New York or Manchester, they have a tractor parade. Anybody think about doing another, doing a tractor parade, our own tractor parade? I think next year, with a happy holidays, we shall add a tractor parade that leads along with Santa Claus at the Veterans Home to elaborate on that festivity. It's a thought. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Since this is a sort of, we, as you know, don't engage in conversation or discussion at this point, but as a point of factual matter, Stuart, do you want to talk very briefly about policy on snow or do you have anything you want to, do you want to add that to your managers' report when we get to the end?
I don't mind telling you that we're monitoring the current warm weather and rain to see what effect it has on the downtown. We've already cleared the schools and the post office and those other places of import and so we're monitoring the situation and we'll make sure that the snow is removed from the downtown if the weather doesn't take care of it.
Okay. Next up, Nancy White, please join us. Yeah, come to the center, please. Thank you.
Hi, Nancy White. I read in the packet tonight that Stuart's going to start talking in his report about the townwide local sales tax option. Are we going to be able to ask questions or make comments after he speaks about that?
That's not usually a time that we do conversation. That is, why don't you make your comments now?
Sure. I think the last thing we need in Bennington is an additional tax when people go out and shop locally. For the past decade, the board has been begging citizens to shop locally and support local businesses. The last thing a business owner needs to do is charge people more who are going to shop or eat at their establishment. Most of us in this town are at the low income or poverty level. Why you would think that we would have the money to pay extra for a local options tax is beyond me. I think that a local options tax in Bennington is just another nail in the coffin for this town.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. So next up, Kevin Hoyt. You don't know this yet, but we just received a letter from the Secretary of State just before five o'clock. It's a three-page letter which we have quite a lot of information in. So we're not interested in accusations against our town clerk or against our Board of Civil Authority tonight, but other than that, you're welcome to have the microphone for a minute.
Sure. Again, thanks for listening to me. My name's Kevin Hoyt, born and raised Vermont, lived here my whole life, and I have discovered, well, let me start with, I spoke with a woman today, a Canadian resident, that she went to Bennington College. She claimed in her own report, she's never had a Vermont residency. She's actually moved back and has been a Canadian resident since 1975, but she's still been voting here for the last 45 years. That's one of, I don't know, I've probably given the public 40, 40 names, 30 or 40 names. On top of that, I'm going to tell the board that I don't believe any of you guys here were elected, okay? I've discovered more than 50% fraud and I think it goes back years and decades and this isn't an allegation.
Okay, it's time for you to wrap up.
All right, I'll wrap it up. What do you do when you find this stuff? I went to the Attorney General, I went to the Vermont Secretary of State. Everybody comes back, even the federal government tells me at rest with the Board of Civil Authority in Bennington, Vermont. The Board of Civil Authority, I believe, is partially responsible and they refuse to investigate themselves. I have asked simply for an investigation. I'd like a meeting to coordinate what I found in my investigation. My problem is I don't trust the Board of Civil Authority, I don't trust the Vermont State Attorney General, I don't trust the Secretary of State, they've already dismissed this. I've got hundreds and hundreds of names in Bennington alone. I don't think we voted for years, maybe decades. I'm prepared to show everybody that evidence, but the people who are supposed to listen refuse to act. So because the Board of Civil Authority refuses to act, I'm telling the select board and I'm asking you, I'm calling on you guys to call this meeting and I want outside federal authorities there, and I'm willing to show everybody these allegations are not allegations. I have the solid evidence. This is the scariest day in my life. This is scary for Vermont State.
So that's the end of your comment for the evening.
Donald, I don't, I'm not even here, I'm talking to the people.
So the Secretary of State has
I said my piece, thank you.
Has looked into every allegation that has been brought to them and they have stated unequivocally that they support both our
Of course, Mr. Chairman.
Let him finish, nobody interrupted you.
Yes, sir.
Our town clerk and the entire process has been cleared by the Secretary of State. Now, if you're not happy with this, you could take it up with the Board of Civil Authority or the Secretary of State. We have no authority over these things and this board, I'm going to tell, I'm going to speak for the board and say, we have no interest in your conspiracy theory at all, okay?
It's not a conspiracy.
We're not going to investigate this.
My problem here, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to tell you straight up, when I give them information, that's why I only have to feed it to them slowly, because when I give Stuart or Cassie, our clerk, information, they go back and they rewrite it, right? I can tell you Larry Goff here, right, they let him pass a ballot, but then they told me it wasn't on the register.
Your three minutes is over.
What about the 20 people?
Your three minutes is over.
They had voted and the votes were tossed.
I'm going to ask you to sit down or we're going to have to stop this meeting and eject you.
What about the people that voted, had somebody else vote for them like me? I didn't vote them.
Okay, so I'm going to take a three-minute pause in this meeting.
You take your three-minute pause. It's time to take a real pause and get control of our own community. You guys are out of control.
I had asked them to stop by for the public.
Okay. I would like to apologize to everyone who sat here and then listened to that. I'm very sorry that you had to hear that.
I got a few.
We will make, we will make this letter public and every allegation has been addressed and had, and we are 100% confident in our town clerk and our Board of Civil Authorities. These are good people, these are people we know, these are people we trust, these are people who are taking care of our interests.
Mr. Chairman, I believe I have to speak on this. I do. And the last time, I remained silent against my better judgment.
You know I don't like this, Jim?
I know you don't.
I'm going to cut you a little, make a brief, please.
What this gentleman did has accused the Board of Civil Authority, former Representative David Schaaf, former Representative Ann Muck, former Representative Al Krosick, and current Representative Mary Morrissey into entering in a criminal conspiracy to defraud the voters of the town of Bennington. That is outrageous. There are dozens of poll workers, justices of the peace, both Democrat and Republican, who oversee elections, who sit side by side with one another, and to accuse those people of committing fraud and entering into conspiracy is outrageous. Furthermore, most recently, Mr. Hoyt went after a dead man.
Jim?
I'll fit a shot in.
Jim, you can't make a personal lead.
Give me one minute. I'm not.
You can't make a personal lead.
I'm not. He, Mr. Hoyt went after a dead man, a man of impeccable integrity, the late Timmy Courtney, accusing him of election fraud. You know, it's one thing to accuse a light person of doing, of committing some criminal act, but this is a dead man who devoted more of his life and did more good in the last breath of his life than those people will do if they live to be 200 years. Finally, he, I think one of the most reprehensible things that he did was, I'm going to finish off, it's the last thing. He got a hold, Mr. Hoyt was able to get a hold of public record about personal loans in this town and he singled out only one, one married couple, one married couple out of all those people who had difficulties. And if Mr. Hoyt were here, I would ask him, have you ever had trouble paying your own bills? Have you ever had difficulties? But he singled these, this couple out for purely personal reasons and to damage them.
Okay. This is very loaded. We're going to move on. We are going to move on, and this will bring your blood pressure down a little bit.
Right.
We are going to move on and talk about bridge number six on Route 9, the final report, okay?
That'll do it. Might put me to sleep.
So I think there are actually some people who have very strong feelings about this, although we've done a lot of work on this since our last meeting. And so before, Jeanne Jenkins, is there anything you're supposed to be reminding me right now?
Yeah, well, Bill Scully.
So I'm going to put Bill Scully on the speakerphone. I wonder if I could borrow somebody's mic? Would it be okay to borrow your?
Yeah, sure. We can use Chad's.
Why don't you grab that one? Use Chad's.
Hello?
Hello, Bill, this is Donald. We're here in the firehouse. Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you just fine.
Can you people hear him? Okay. We've got a little mic on you, Bill, so everything you say will be part of the formal record at this point on. Nancy, you got that? Okay, great.
Okay.
So we are considering, sorry, I'm getting a little feedback here, maybe too many mics. We are considering the, an approach to Bridge Six on Route 9. Everybody knows this as the kind of Martin's, Miller's toll bridge, and we were presented with an alternatives matrix twice now. This will be the third time we've seen this, and we have been talking to businesses and trying to figure out what the best way forward for us is. At our last meeting, two meetings ago, we had a business come and tell us that we needed to get this over with as quickly as possible and that it should be done early in the spring. At our last meeting, we had somebody come that said it would be better to have it be over a longer period of time by closing one lane at a time and, how's that? Is that better over there? Okay. And so what we're really looking at at this point in my mind is the difference between, I think we've decided already that we don't want to, that we don't want to do the chintzy repair, given the understructure of the bridge, which looks like it's about the, which looks poor. And so if we're looking at alternatives 3A and 3B, we're looking at some very different numbers. The 3A has a total project cost of roughly 3.1 million, 3B has a total project cost of roughly 4.2, 4.3 million. And the, the town share on 3A is 157,000 roughly, and the town share on alternative B is 129,000 roughly. So a difference of about $271,000. The big difference really, though, is the difference in time during which they, this project gets done. Either it gets done in two months, both lanes are closed and it gets done in two months, or one lane is closed at a time, and according to an email that we received from you, Stuart, the construction period spans over eight to nine months. That would be the 3B scenario, right? Is that what the transportation people told you? Okay.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure, Bill, go ahead.
What would happen if we decided to treat the pot a little bit, put 25,000 and 25,000 respectively for one or two weeks early completion?
All right. I'm sorry, we couldn't quite understand that. If you would be willing to say it one more time, please, Bill.
What would happen if we put up a, an early to-do list, four or five weeks, excuse me, five or six weeks to have the early completion reward?
I'm going to, with the board's permission, I'd like to take him off speakerphone just for a minute, so I can really hear what he's saying. Okay. Bill, I'm sorry, we, what would happen if we took four to five weeks and then what did you say? So you're, you're asking, could they complete it in a shorter period of time, a week or two shorter, for an extra $100,000? Okay. Okay, let me, let me repeat that if I may, Bill, and see if I've got it right, but I think what he, I think the question he's asking, Stuart, and this would not be something this board could answer tonight, but is if we were to shorten the period of time from two months to six to seven weeks, would it be possible to do that for an extra cost of $100,000? I don't know exactly where that number comes from, but this is the, you know, could the state accelerate it even further than what we've already done?
Well, I know that the contract has incentives for early completion or timely completion. It also has, I think, disincentives or will have disincentives for failure to complete in the timeframe. I can't answer the question as to whether or not the incentives for early completion would amount to $100,000 or not. That, that remains to be seen. That will be part of the bid process and the ultimate responsibility of the agency of transportation.
But were we not told that part of the reason to close the road completely was so that they could finish as quickly as possible and so the, and so it's not going to be faster than, I mean, so they're already moving as quickly as they can with the full closure. So it's not, it seems hard to imagine that they could go faster than, than they're already saying that they might even go, you know, they, they would consider going around the clock. I, I thought that maybe what Bill was going to ask was, is there a way to do, if we did one lane for a month, you know, are there things that, that we could do that would shorten that amount of full closure time that would make it substantial, but, you know, it feels like we're, it's a crazy, it's sort of a crazy trade-off to do half and then if you close everything, then how do you?
Bill, do you have any reason to believe that it could be done in under two months? Is there, did you speak to somebody or do you have some sort of, some sort of reason why you suggest that?
Two months is arbitrary. It's an arbitrary timeline. Does that get it down to timeline?
Okay. I think he's, I think he's saying it's arbitrary. Yeah.
Yeah. It is, but it's best guess. So do we, we did not get a confirmed answer on whether Beach Street would be closed, right? I mean, that was one of the, the concerns.
Beach Street was not, is not planned to be closed. In the presentations that we received from the agency, Beach Street would remain open. In answer to Mr. Martin's questions to the agency, the agency indicated that the contractor, if they use the municipal's lot as a staging area, might request that it be closed for, or one lane for a portion of time. That falls to us, and I think our answer would be no.
Yeah. Yeah.
So when we, when we comment on whatever selection process we make here, one of our comments will be, Beach Street will not be closed to traffic at any time during the project.
I think the other thing that we really heard loud and clear is that May-June, yes, there are biological things in the river, but, but May-June is a time period that we strongly prefer.
Yeah.
Now, if that's on the accelerated program, if we were to go for the non-accelerated program, it's an eight to nine-month construction period, so I assume that is the whole summer, a spring, summer, and fall, actually. Yeah.
Yes, it would, it would be longer.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here?
Well, I just would ask, I guess, if there are other board members that have comments since the last meeting that you'd, we haven't really run Bill's thought to ground, but Bill, I'm not quite sure what to do with that, to be quite honest with you. It's a, it's a good idea, but it does feel hard to imagine that that entire bridge replacement could happen in less than two months.
We can toy with it over the next couple of months. So I have to decide now. Something we can decide on later.
I think.
Donald, the only thing I would say to the, the idea that it could be done or may be done faster is that the agency of transportation, when they scope these projects, they take a very conservative approach to a project of this size, because you don't know what you're going to run into once you, once you get onto the site. So could it be done faster? Remember, they talked about a 24-hour work period, they talked about working seven days a week, 24/7. We've heard that that's not what the businesses that surround that property want.
Right.
So I, I think you have to weigh that truly accelerated approach to getting the job done to, is it going to inconvenience the residences and the businesses that surround the site during construction?
I think I better understand Bill's comment now. Bill, forgive me if I haven't quite gotten it, I was missing the word toy, but I think he said we can toy with that later, meaning, meaning if we were to move towards the accelerated process, we should go in with both feet and we should push as hard as we can to have it be shorter than the full two months, and if it costs a little bit more to have it shorter than the, than the full two months, if we could get it down to six or seven weeks, we as a board should consider that. Did I catch that about right, Bill?
You got it perfectly. Thank you.
Thanks. So I actually, I'm not sure what the hope is in beating them up when the time comes, but if we could put forward in our letter that we would really like to see a accelerated, accelerated timeframe, I think, and, and we would like to really know what that, what that would mean to the project, I think that's what Bill's asking for, and I guess I would support that too in the letter.
I think, but I, I think in the same way that we have reservation, we do not want Beach Street closed, we want May-June if we can. I think it, the Saffron Inn would not be able to sustain two months or even six weeks of, you know, 24-hour-a-day pounding. So I, you know, I, I think there, I think we do have different things that we need to be weighing here, so I, you know.
Oh, in terms of night work?
Yeah, because if we said go full steam, I mean, they would say, well, that means 24 hours a day, and I think, I do think we want to say we do not want them working during the nighttime. So, I mean, that's going to, that will significantly hurt their business.
Unless there are other board comments, I'd like to, even though we've already been through this a couple times, I'd like to offer the general public an opportunity to comment on this. If there are people that would like to comment, now's your time. Anyone have any, anything on this? Come on up to the mic. We know who you are, but tell us anyway.
I'm Sam Mercino and I live near that area, I live off of Harbor Road in the desert Just one comment, we as a community really need to support businesses that are going to be affected by this, and I've already started. I put out a post on social media that, you know, just basically saying that we as a community, when this happens, we've got to support these businesses, and I will continue this until the ribbon's cutting ceremony of this bridge. I mean, it's, it's a really tight area, as you know, I mean, between Morgan Street, I mean, I don't even know if Morgan Street's going to be affected being closed or not. So it just, you know, I assume that's going to be open as well.
Morgan Street would be open, yeah.
Right, so it's just, you know, getting it out, I agree with the board to do it and, and try to be less detrimental to this, to the businesses as possible. Thank you.
There are, there are two elements to this, it seems to me. One is that it's going to be painful however we do it, and so we need to rip the Band-Aid off and kind of get it over with, right? So that, that's one piece. The other piece is we need to support our local businesses in every way we can within that context. So whether it's signs that you mentioned, Jeanne- So whether it's signs that you mentioned, Gene, at the last meeting, or whether it's trying to beat up on the, uh, not beat up, whether it's trying to reduce even the accelerated period to six or seven weeks as, as Bill suggests, um, or whether, uh, whether it's, whatever Sam has in mind in terms of supporting local businesses, maybe we all just need to make sure to go down to the car wash a little bit, a few extra times during that period, during those two months, or something like that. I know, I know they always do a good job down there. Um, so, unless there is a, unless there is more discussion, I think I would love to know if there's a motion on the table. Would anybody, is there further discussion?
Keith Martin wanted to address.
Oh, sure, come on up. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Keith Martin. Just a couple brief comments. I did get the same response that Sue did from the state, and, um, it would be great if, you know, if they could do it less than two months if we went with the total closure, but as I said, they don't have all the details yet, and they can't really answer all those questions. You have to, you have to be careful of the reverse happening, and what if it's a total closure of three months? Something goes wrong and it's going to take longer than the two expected months. The other, um, comment was, and I can't figure out how they're figuring that under the partial closure, there would be alternating traffic eight out of the nine months, nine months being the total construction period, or under the total closure. The total construction period's six months, but they expect to do it in just two out of six. Doesn't make sense that, um, there's four months out of the six that we don't know what they're going to be doing, except it won't be total, it won't be during that total closure period, yet on the nine-month one, they're planning on using eight out of nine to do two-way traffic, just, the numbers just don't add up. I'm, I'm thinking that, um, when we get down to it, there's going to be probably closer than, to two and a half to three months with total bridge closure, and perhaps maybe six months of one-way traffic, alternating traffic, which I think would be a better choice than, um, the total bridge.
Well, if we do go the accelerated bridge route, there better not be, you know? I mean, the financial incentives kick in the day, the first day that they're late, disincentives kick in the first day that they're late, and, and I hope they would be acute enough that they would, uh, that they wouldn't do that. We did, thank you for forwarding that email, by the way, that was very helpful. Um, and I read that as, uh, saying, well, there's not a lot of pre-work that needs to happen in the full closure route because there, because there's just not a lot of, uh, things that have to happen there, and so that, in terms of cables or whatever, um, that seemed like there are a lot of wires that go by there, but for whatever reason, they felt like they didn't need to do as much pre-work, but they weren't backing away from the two-month closure at that point. But I, I hear your point, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a good concern, but my hope would be that we could find a way to really clamp down on this and, and get, get it under two months, possibly significantly.
And I think that's, that's the purpose of the, this conversation with the agency. By coming to us practically three years before the project goes off, they're looking for us to, to give them guidelines, and they can be strong guidelines. We can't tolerate a closure of more than eight weeks. We can't tolerate the closure of Beach Street or Morgan Street. We can't tolerate the, the interference with the businesses that, that exist there. Those kinds of things can be said in that document that we send back to them that ultimately would be signed, and...
Gene, before I call on you, I just want to make sure Keith has, has had a full chance to express his.
Yes.
Have you got anything else on your mind, or you, any other board questions for Keith while he's up, so he doesn't have to get up and down and up and down? No? Okay. Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate your input.
Do you want to go or...
I'm going to go to Gene, and then we'll catch you, Matt.
Okay. Um, I guess I'm just curious if the state could do a more in-depth analysis of the condition of the bridge ahead of time to possibly uncover unexpected things that they might not know of yet that would cause a delay or make it take longer, or did they already inspect it as detailed as they possibly can at this point?
They've already completed their detailed analysis.
I did, my reading of the, both the report and of their presentation was that that's the reason not to go for the deck replacement, is that they've done enough structural analysis of the iron and the steel that's in that bridge to know that it's not going to last another hundred years with just a deck replacement.
So, I guess my ultimate question is, are they, based on what they know and the detail of the analysis that they've done, are they more than confident that they can get it done in two months? Like, what's the chances it could take much, much longer? Is it slim to none, or, you know?
I can, no, get that, yeah.
All right.
Well, I would imagine that the, the companies that they're, um, these bridge builders have done it once or twice.
Your mic.
That they've done, you know, the, the sort of thing once or twice.
They have done it once or twice.
Nevertheless.
So, Matt, let's, um, let's, let's hear what you have to say.
Sure. Matt Harrington, Executive Director of the Bennington Regional Chamber. Uh, we've received a couple emails based on this, so I'd just be remiss if I didn't get up and just vocalized the, the concern of our business members, um, and we'll be the first to get together a group if we need to, to think about different ways to market the, the, the street while it's under construction. Um, obviously, we, we want to make sure that it's fast and efficient as well as honoring our, our businesses, but I think that's been very much vocalized by the select board, so I appreciate that, and again, we're happy to coordinate some sort of marketing, whatever happens to be, to, to help our, our businesses, including Keith, who came up here earlier. So, thank you.
Yeah, that will be critical, I think. Uh, thank you, Matt, for that. Other comments from the audience? Um, do we feel ready to vote on this as a board? If so, I would entertain a motion to, uh, to indicate to our town manager to head in one direction or another.
The one thing you didn't mention was, one of the reasons we chose this option is the amount of time it will last. You didn't go through that. I didn't know if you wanted to make the public aware of the number of years. The one we've chosen should last a hundred years.
Sure. On this grid, um, the superstructure repair lasts for about 15 years. That's a, that's a $568,000 project, uh, and the sup, the superstructure replacement, that is the new deck, new concrete deck, lasts for 30 years. Uh, what we're looking at are two options for full bridge replacement, one with off-site detour and one with phased construction. Um, the one that we are looking at is $1.14 million less expensive overall and, and $271,000 less expensive to the town, um, but arguably may have a harder impact on particularly Martins, many, uh, Martins. Um, but it will be, it would be, we hope, we, we are told, under two months, and following the Bill Scully theory, who's, who's going to, um, I know he's going to help us, uh, press hard on this, um, that we would maybe be able to even, even get, do something better than those two months.
And that one lasts a hundred years.
And that, those both last a hundred years. Full bridge replacement is a stainless steel, right? Is that right, Dan? Stainless steel, was it? Or is it a different kind of steel? Anyway.
Yes.
Replacing all the metal, replacing all the, all the, um, replacing everything.
Right.
So...
That's 3A is the basis.
So, okay, coming back to the, you know, the taxpayer point here, which is not, there are many elements to this besides just the taxpayer, but out of pocket to the taxpayer, on the accelerated program, the two-month program, it's $156,941 to the town of Bennington. Under the phased construction program, where lanes stay open, uh, for roughly eight or nine months of construction, it's $428,547,000, uh, to the town.
And I'm assuming this project is three years out, that price is locked in?
Don't know that, Stuart. What do you know about that?
No, these are, these are estimates, conservative estimates, because the, the agency tends to be very, very conservative, but we won't know the actual price until the document, the bid documents are, are accepted.
So they've probably accounted for...
I, I think they're looking forward, they're doing future dollars most likely in their estimates, but, uh, there's no guarantee that, that, I mean, it could come in lower, it could come in higher, don't know.
That's true.
So you're looking for a motion?
I am looking for a motion.
Um, Stuart, which is, just for, help me out, in the sense of option 3A, is that the, that's the one we're talking about?
That's the off-site detour.
That's the off-site detour, all closure.
Accelerated program.
Accelerated building, et cetera. Is it best to have a motion that actually mentions option 3A? Is that the...
Yes, they'll be looking...
Okay, well, then...
The document that I'm looking at requires that we check off the alternate that we have voted for.
Right.
And then, uh, we will add our concerns that I've heard from the board and from the public would be added to that document and then set on to...
Would you, would you like the concerns in the motion? Would that be helpful?
If you, sure.
If I think I can do it, which is, that's an entirely different...
That's a good idea.
But let me, let me at least try, and I'll take any friendly amendments for things that I forget.
Okay.
Okay, that this board approve or request option 3A, that the board request the state to do this, uh, full bridge replacement as quickly as is possible, but not with 24-hour construction, that, um...
May, May-June?
That the construction time be, uh, set for the months of May and June, that, uh, let's see, I'm trying to remember.
Beach Street stays open?
Yes, Beach Street stays open.
Why don't you say Beach and Morgan, just...
That makes, that's what I was trying to remember, was Morgan. So, that Beach Street and Morgan Street stay open, um, and that we reserve any opinion on the use of the town lot, uh, until we meet with the contractor.
Okay, that's a good motion.
How's that?
Nice, Bruce.
Can I second that one?
Wait, I hear Bill rustling, is that you, Bill?
And it's me, I'm, I'm ready to vote.
You're ready to say, did you want to second that?
I will second that.
All right, good man. Uh, so we have a motion on the floor, we have, it's seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion on this motion? If not, I would call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Bill, that was great, it was great having your input, and we look forward to having you, um, helping us with this as we, as we move along. Now, are you going to stay on the line here, or are you going to, do you want to watch us on Cat TV?
I'm going to watch you on Cat TV where I can hear everyone's voice.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much for joining us, and, um, we look forward to the next contact we have with you.
Bye, Bill.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, so, 6:44, Bill Scully signed off. We have, um, we have elected to go forward 3A. Keith, I'm, I'm sorry about this, I think, I think overall picture for the community is that we feel like this is important to get done as quickly as possible, but we would like to work particularly with your business, but with all businesses, to try to make this as painless as possible in any way that we can, so. Um, and thank you for your input on this, and thank you for coming to the meetings, and thank you for being such a good sport about it. You're a, you're a good guy. So, the next order of business tonight is something that we're not apparently supposed to call a cud, but it's a Communications Union District, and, um, we have, I think, two presenters tonight on this. Why don't you, two come up and, four, four? Goodness, all right, well, why don't you come up to the podium? All four of you, or whoever would like to present, and tell us, uh, what, what the Communications Union District is and what it might mean to us.
So, we have a couple people just to give some input as to why it's necessary.
Introduce yourself, please, if you would, yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Hatch, I'm a resident of Bennington, and, um, tonight we have John, John Dyke, Beth Hardisty, and Jonathan Cooper here, along with Tim Scoggins, uh, who are part of a task force to introduce a, a Communications Union District, which we are tentatively calling the Southern Vermont Communications Union District. And we're going to kind of present what the problem statement is, though a lot of us are very familiar with it, then go into what a Communications District is and what it is not, and then talk about how that dovetails into a lot of the things that BRCRC and others have been talking about here tonight. Um, and what we're, they ask tonight is, is of the board to, uh, petition the board to allow the eligible voters of Bennington, uh, a proposition to join the Southern Vermont Communications Union District, uh, in, in the town meeting day. Uh, we require to initiate this CUD in primarily Bennington County, is a vote by the select board, um, to be the initial, um, um, the initial starters of the, the CUD itself. Um, so, just want to go into, uh, John and Beth and have their story told of why they're a part of this task force, and I think it will resonate with folks, and then we'll go back into more of the details of what the CUD is.
Okay, thank you.
I'm John Dyke, thank you for giving this time to us to consider this request. Beth Hardisty there, and I put this little statement together. We live on Harrington Road, just west of North Bennington, and we have internet service that allows download at 2.8 megabits per second and upload at .7 megabits, and that means that all our communication over the internet is very slow, and it's often not feasible for the task at hand. Down and uploading complex documents or pictures can take hours to complete. Some days, it's the next day when we finally get the job done. Streaming is bumpy, awkward, and often ended abruptly. We have neighbors on Harrington Road who report even slower service. Now, we're luckily retired, however, people trying to work from home remotely really would have trouble exchanging documents with a workplace reliably at, at those speeds. That's the slow part. Our service is also very inconsistent. In each of the last three years, we have been without any internet service for over a week at a time, and then there've been shorter interruptions as well. Customer service is with distant offices over the phone. We are required to slowly go through tests of different equipment before a technician is sent. By now, we know what the basic problems are going to be, but we still have to endure the mandatory waiting periods before the provider accepts that it needs to solve the issues. Our service is over a digital subscriber line from our landline provider. We've been told informally that the company has equipment that could enable more reliable service at 20 megabits per second. To our neighborhood, it's not just us, but that the company chooses not to deploy that equipment. We reached out to a cable operator recently about paying for a cable to the house. We were considering the thousands of dollars that this would cost when the cable operator's sales agent stopped returning our calls. It has become clear to us that private providers have little or no interest in working with us, and that's why we're very interested in internet service through a locally-owned, nonprofit Communications Union District. We hope a CUD can improve our service using current technologies and also be around in the future to help us connect through technologies that have yet to be developed. So, Eric, I think, will come back and, and he can discuss more of the details of what a CUD is and how you get there.
Okay, um, and so if we're entirely clear, this is about bringing, uh, fiber optic internet to everyone that's included in the CUD district. That's a very different model than what we have today with, uh, big telecoms, where they are going where it's profitable for them in the highly concentrated areas. So, if you have a farm or a residence way out, uh, down a road, uh, you're not going to be getting high-speed internet.
Eric, may I cut you off just for a second, please?
Absolutely.
I think this is going to help you and help people who are watching this. I know this from our conversations, but I would like to just put everybody at ease that this is not a request to put a bond vote on the town meeting for us to pay for anything, because this is not that. This is, this is a request to set up an entity that might eventually provide fiber optic to every single house in Bennington County, and how you pay for that is something that would be on the CUD. It's, you're not, you're not asking us to put it on the ballot...
Correct.
For, for this March, for taxpayers to pay for, and I, I feel like people aren't going to be able to hear everything else you have to say unless they know that.
Okay, so, thank you for making that. Okay, so thank you for making that.
Everybody who's watching, everybody who's following, we're not going to get hit for a big request to pay for this right, this in March.
At all, actually, yes.
But it's, let's think of it as an opportunity to push Bennington County into the 22nd century or, you know, really be a leader in communications and to try to attract the people for whom that would be interesting, so.
That's right, so, so we just want to have the opportunity to present to folks, do you want to join the, the CUD? One of the interesting things about the CUD is that by statute, towns that join, they cannot have tax revenue paid to the CUD. The CUD has to be self-financing and they do that through subscription revenue and in the beginning, they have grants and bridge loans that would provide those initial startup costs. But the, by statute, again, towns are not allowed to provide tax dollars to subsidize or pay for the, the CUD. So it's its own entity, the town will appoint representatives to the CUD and that CUD is a municipality, as you said, so it's an entity unto itself that would go out and, and create a feasibility study of what a, an overlay of fiber optic would be for all of those towns that are going to be joining the CUD. This isn't the first time that it's happening in Vermont, thankfully it's happened before, we've got three existing CUDs, Wyndham County is actively pursuing their own CUD, we have people in White Creek that are pursuing their CUDs and then in Massachusetts as well. So all around us, people are going to be getting high-speed fiber, we can't, we don't want to be left behind. And so that's why we want to take this opportunity and the task force of, of the people I mentioned and others in, in the other towns in, in Bennington County have been working to do things such as this, is talk to the, the boards of each town and ask for inclusion on the ballot in March to say, do, do you want to participate and join the Southern Vermont Communications Union District? That doesn't encumber the town, doesn't require any financial input, it doesn't require any services, it's just that you now agree to, to join the CUD. The CUD then goes and decides what, it goes and, and applies for a grant and there are many grants out there, many from Vermont, from the USDA as well, but the first grant is to fund a feasibility study. What would the overlay look like? Who would we include? Of the towns that agreed to go into the CUD, how would we, how would we arrange that? What, what could we do? What are the geographical challenges? What are, where's the current provider? Where are the clusters of homes, those types of things? So it's a big feasibility study because in, in the output of that is a business plan because the CUD has to be self-sufficient. It's, it's a nonprofit, but it has to pay for the upkeep and the services and the build-out because, you know, we're talking towns up to a county size of participants, so there's a period of time that the CUD would be built out. And so, so that's, that's really what the CUD is and our first milestone really is to have each and every town that we want, and that's really mostly in, in Bennington County, to, to participate in the, in the CUD. We have three towns already, Tim Shaftesbury, Sunderland and Sandgate have all agreed to, so we have the statutory minimum of two towns, so the CUD will be formed, but we want to get everyone included as soon as possible from the towns' perspectives so that they can be included in the feasibility study and that we get a higher rate concentration of people because that's when it becomes attractive to the internet service providers and the construction companies that we would, the CUD would hire to build out the, build out the, the network. So, you know, that's what our ask is, is tonight, is to, to be able to put that question to the, to the town if you would like to join the CUD. And then in the interim time, a lot of what the task force will be doing is also a lot of outreach and communication and education about what the CUD is, why it's a positive, what are, what are some of the things that people want to know about the CUD and why it's, it's a very good thing for, for us to have and to, to join and go forward with. One quick thing before I, Jonathan kind of come up and talk about how that dovetails into a lot of what the BCRC is doing and others are doing. What we're talking about here is fiber optic networks. What we have today in place is either cable or copper line and those are not future-proof, those are not, they're very costly to maintain, they can't reach the speeds that fiber optic can. And so, a lot of the benefits that people would have in telecommuting and, you know, medical, distance medicine, distance education, those types of things, really, fiber is what, fiber optic is really what you need in order to have that base infrastructure and grow services and businesses and opportunities from there. And so, John was saying that, you know, with an expensive upgrade, his neighborhood might get to 20 megabits, but really that's unacceptable nowadays and we, we need to be talking about gigabytes and that's what we would be talking about with fiber optic. So, I'll leave that there and see Jonathan want to build upon that.
Thank you very much, Eric, again, my name is Jonathan Cooper, I'm here as a community economic development specialist at the Bennington County Regional Commission. And I've been attending the task force's meeting sort of informally over the past few, maybe the last month or so, and have been encouraged by the sense of this as a regional issue. There's something that I think Eric made a good point of towards the end of his remarks that we're looking at sort of a sense of digital inclusion, something that is sort of an emerging issue as the communications nature of the CUD is sort of taking primacy here as it's, as it is relevant to elements of economy, but also elements of communication, the basics of, of social infrastructure. There's one comment that I sort of wanted to add and it pertains to the 2019 Southern Vermont Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which as has been mentioned before, has two goals, to strengthen business and support people. There are five objectives that are meant to meet those two goals, one of which I'd like to mention here and now. It is the third objective, to improve our physical infrastructure, to make the critical infrastructural improvements necessary for Southern Vermont to become resident and business-ready. The primary strategy there is to expand broadband and sell infrastructure and we've, and I just wanted to sort of give this sort of regional perspective, sort of encouraged as I, as Eric mentioned, to see Shaftesbury, Sunderland and Sandgate's select boards approving of requests to put this question to the ballot. And that indicates a very important period for this task force in the coming months around public education and outreach and getting some of the questions answered ahead of time and bringing this roadshow out to the broader public in the months to come. And we look forward to any questions that you may have on what that may look like or any details about the request we are making here and now tonight. So unless there are other comments from Eric, John or Beth, if there are any questions you.
You have, you have sample ballot language that you would like to have included, does anyone have that?
Yes, we do.
That small handout that. Yeah, we do, and we're going to have very common language between all of the towns and it's spelled out statutorily as well, so it's, it's pretty straightforward language that we will provide.
Can you read it to us? Do you have it in front of you or is it?
We may.
I think I can answer that.
Tim, please.
It's written in statute and it's very simply, shall the town of Bennington join the Southern Vermont Communication Union District?
Okay, this is Tim Scoggins, we are, our neighbor from the north. The distant hamlet of Shaftesbury.
Yes, I was, if I can, I'd like to make another comment or two, just to give you a little historical context, the reason that you're hearing about this now and you're hearing about Communication Union Districts all across the state is because of the broadband bill that recently passed the legislature and signed into law, Act 79, also called H513, largely sponsored and pushed through by Laura Sibilia over the mountain in Dover. It is a, an attempt to repeat a successful model for getting internet to underserved areas and the model that we're all looking to is EC fiber, East Central Vermont Fiber. It's, it happened several years ago, they pioneered this effort, they created the, the first Communication Union District and they helped write the statutes that define what one is, what ballot language you put on to create one, what the governing board is, that sort of thing. But what they did was they created the Communication Union District and then they, they went to a, what was then a local phone company called ValleyNet of, and convinced them, well, what they found in ValleyNet was other concerned citizens who were worried about the broadband problem, they converted ValleyNet from a local phone company into an, a broadband internet provider and they made it work. And they are now a Communication Union District of 27 towns, they are providing fiber to the premises where the average density is, I believe, somewhere between 10 and 14 houses per mile, areas that places like Comcast won't even touch, and they're, they're, they're keeping their cash, cash flow positive. So they have demonstrated the model that can work and the Act 79 was predicated on helping other towns do that. So what they're, Act 79 does is it provides money for these feasibility studies that were mentioned to look at Communication Union Districts and then provides some, some of the bridge funding that would help them get started. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of historical context there. This has been done before and this is the model that the state's encouraging for other areas to, to, to try and repeat and it's, it's really based on the idea that nobody, including the state, is going to ride in on a white horse and solve the internet problem and it really has to come from the community. And so, the, what, what's, what it starts with is a question on the ballot that says, will Bennington join the Southern Vermont Communication Union District?
Tim, I know you're a man that cuts to the chase and we like that here, but it, tell me if I've got it right, the Act 79 makes it so that we can put on the ballot to the voters whether or not we should join the Communications Union District. If we do join that, if we, if the voters vote to join the Communications Union District, the only thing that happens is that we then begin to participate in the conversation, we, we send a delegate.
Correct.
To the board of, to the directing board of the Communications District and then they begin to work things out and they come, they come back to us as necessary at that point.
Correct, everything he says is correct except Act 79 did not create the Communication Union District, that was already in statute.
Okay.
Act 79 provides funding for feasibility studies and some, some bridge money to encourage Communication Union District.
So there's very little risk for our community and going, I mean, really no risk for our community to go into this, except that if we elect not to do it, then we are the community that doesn't want faster internet and doesn't want to be well-positioned for business, right? Okay, so.
Yeah, that's right, there's essentially no risk. If we do this, we create it, we do the feasibility study and the feasibility study says EC fiber model will not work in this area, no Communication Union District model will work in this area, we dissolve it and there's no loss. And again, the, the important point is, is by state law, town finances cannot be used to pay for communications infrastructure. So even if we came back to you and asked for it, you wouldn't be able to give it to us.
Well, we're glad to have you here tonight because we're, we're having a warrants-only meeting at our next meeting and then we're canceling our, the following meeting, which is Christmas Eve, I think, or, or right before Christmas Eve. And then the meeting after that would be two days or one day before we have to finalize what goes on the ballot, right?
I think, well, January 13th would be our first meeting in January, I believe. And then it's our last meeting in January where we finalize the warrant.
Finalize the warrant.
And the ballot items.
Okay, so, but to my mind, I'm saying, I guess I'm saying this to the board, you know, we have sort of a two-policy rule where we bring things up twice and talk about them, but in a situation where we're putting it to the voters and it seems like it has a, a very obvious upside, I would be happy to take a vote on this tonight if, if we felt like that was something we wanted to do. So before we go there, let's open it up to the board and see if we have questions for the, any of these people that, that just presented. Anything that.
No, I'd just like to say my daughter is a subscriber to EC fiber, her internet, she lives in Tonbridge, which is a town of 1,000 people, and her internet is faster than ours.
Other questions?
Stay with dial-up.
I didn't have my mic on, sorry.
Jim says stay with dial-up.
Oh, yeah. Can we just underscore for everybody that, that if we really want to do, to answer Sam's question about business, that this really is a critical piece of infrastructure for business. It, it will do us no good to go out and try to recruit if we don't have this kind of infrastructure.
Or if our, if our position in the market is, oh, we don't really care.
Yeah, I, I do not, I for one do not want to send that message. So while I'm generally like the two-meeting rule, I was trying in my head to think about how that would work in this situation and I would agree that we can waive it.
We're putting it to the voters.
Yeah.
Let's let them decide.
Yeah.
And, and I do like that you're willing to carry all of the water on the education piece, thank you for that. So our board is not going to do that for you. Our, our board is going to just be, you know, you're welcome to come present to us again, but we would really count on you to get the word out and, and to communicate clearly and thoroughly to our citizenry about this, so thank you for that.
I just want to pass on kudos to Laura Sibilia. She did yeoman's work on getting this bill done and it came before my committee, the Commerce Committee, and we've heard from witness after witness who said that without this sort of infrastructure, it is critical, it is a critical failure in not being able to build business in the state of Vermont. We absolutely need this, and we need it statewide. It's, it's a critical part of whether or not we can attract other businesses to the state and do business. So you got it.
Okay. Well, geez, Jim, it sounds like you might be interested in making, any, any, any other comments from the public? Sam, this is Sam Rustino, we know your name by now.
This is new vocabulary, CUD. Are they going to be using the existing lines of fiber optics or, I mean, I mean, I all know this is.
No, we don't know any of this.
I got to get educated, I'm going to talk to him from Shaftesbury as far as this, I mean, yeah, five rock, six is it, I'm electrician by trade, if, you know, you got to go to the holy grail, so that's it.
Yeah, right, yeah, go, go big or go home. Other comments? Okay, so would anybody like to make a motion on this? The motion that we would be looking for would be to follow the language, the statute language, which would put this on the March town meeting ballot.
I'll move that.
Second.
All right. Okay, any further board discussion on this topic?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? No?
No.
So to unanimous vote? Thank you, see, thank you, CUD people.
Thank you.
We're really glad to have you here and, you know, we really hope you bring lightning-fast internet to every resident of Bennington County without having it cost us anything. We think that sounds great.
Thank you.
All right, so we are going to move on now to the number, item number six, the managers' report. Stuart, what have you got for us tonight?
I have two action items for you. The first is Bennington Food Truck Festival and I apologize for the various typos in the presentation. It is scheduled currently for Saturday, September 19th, 2020.
Thank you.
Yes, I had a good time typing this. From 8:00 AM until 7:00 PM, they have a request to close School Street from Main to Pleasant during this time period. They also include in their request, no-cost police presence for traffic control from noon until 6:00 PM. As I indicated in my presentation to you, Paul and I are opposed to provide. As I indicated in my presentation to you, Paul and I are opposed to providing that kind of police presence at no cost because it does require pulling someone off a detail or in from a day off to cover this kind of event. But nonetheless, I leave that to your discretion. I'm looking for a motion to allow this festival to go forward on that date during that time and to close Pleasant Street as requested.
Stuart, if I may, I'm going to have to put you on the spot on behalf of the board. I think, you know, we all love the food truck festival. We all want to see more happening downtown. This board is kind of predisposed towards good activities like that, and yet, and I know you feel that way too, and yet you feel there's a case for not providing police presence on the taxpayer on this. So would you be willing to make your case to us on this, please?
Well, I think it comes down to, you know, these events are events which make money for the individuals or businesses that put them on, and they are asking essentially for the taxpayers to subsidize their profit-making opportunity. And I just don't think that that's an appropriate response.
Well, cut to the chase. How much would it cost?
I have no idea.
Well, what do we start for?
Well, noon until 6:00, you're talking about six hours at forty-some-odd dollars an hour for pay and benefits.
Two cops.
Two-hundred-and-forty bucks. Well, I don't know how many you'd need.
Well, this past year, there were two officers.
Yeah.
Because it was right outside my front door.
Well, there you have it, Jim. So, you know, you're looking at, you know, $240 to $300 for that?
Per officer.
Per officer, if you need to.
Well, public safety is really important to us, obviously, and in the scope of things, that's not a lot of money. But I think, I think I've heard you say there's a precedent on this. And so just give us a little bit on that, if you would please.
Precedence? The only precedence we have is that the BBC has now been granted the opportunity to have Mayfest without paying for any police presence at the event.
But this sets a precedent for private-
I'm more not, there's a precedent for private functions to pay for.
A precedent that I've been opposed to, but nonetheless, one that has been set.
Yeah. So I guess the question for this board is, do we want to start parsing which events, which non, which for-profit events have to pay for police presence and which don't? And in the absence of some sort of firm policy on that, it would fall to us to decide on a case-by-case basis. I see some faces being made. Let's hear your opinions.
I, I mean, so I am of two minds. I, Stu, you have given me a new appreciation for why we might not want to waive the cost. I love the food truck event. I feel really strongly that we do need police presence, and I brought it up this past year. People are walking around with beers. I mean, there's both, there's both the crossing the street piece, which traffic was being, traffic was really kind to the pedestrians, but there was a lot of just, you know, stepping out and walking across the street kind of stuff. There are also people walking around with beer rather than staying in the area where they should be staying. And I don't know if that falls into the police, into the paid police presence or not, but I also don't want people to be arrested for not realizing that they shouldn't be walking around with cups. I mean, I think you do make a good case for it's not a huge amount of money, so, and so an event that's making money, this is just the cost of doing business. I do think that it is problematic. My memory on the Mayfest event was, one hand, we were giving, and the other hand, we were taking away. It was money that was going to the BBC for their, for their operational budget.
That's true.
And so it was silly because we were giving them money on the one hand and then taking it back. So it was a zero sum, but this is different because it's a private event. So, you know, so I am of two minds about it because I do want the event to happen, and I think it's really important for people to be safe when they're at the event. So-
Other board opinions?
Yeah. I'm with Jeanne on everything that she said. I'm also not inclined to want to be the arbiter on a case-by-case basis of who we would provide police personnel for and who we would not. And I guess I would say if there are, you know, if two officers are needed, officers are needed, and it's a $500 cost, that's a cost of running, part of the cost of running it, and that can be reasonably divided amongst the participants, it seems to me. And in the, I guess, in the absence of having any policy about this, and I couldn't find any, I would say that we need to tell them and everybody else that police presence, we would very much recommend it, or we could even require it, I suppose, in some sense-
Yes.
-for the closing of School Street, particularly noting that where it's, people are going to walk back and forth. I would hope we could do this by conversationally rather than requiring it, but I am disinclined at the moment to, for the town taxpayers to pay for the police. It's, I guess I'm in agreement with this, Stuart.
Jeanne, do you have any thoughts?
No, I have nothing to add, other than I agree that hopefully, I'm assuming the food truck vendors pay a fee to participate, and possibly they could pay just a little bit more to help defray the cost of the police, because, you know, they more than anyone doesn't want anything to happen to the event. They want to be able to come back year after year after year. So I guess that would be my recommendation. I also do not want to be the arbiter of trying to decide who would get free police presence and who would not. That's a sticky wicket and a road I'm not willing to go down.
Jim, what are your thoughts?
I agree with everything that the three previous speakers have said would set an unusual precedent, and we would be hard-pressed not to meet that accommodation. Nevertheless, as I said, this has been right outside my front door, and I loved it. It was great for the downtown. It really was. The only admonition that I would say to the organizers is, why don't you do it more frequently? Let's do it three, four, let's do it seasonally.
Yeah, that's a lot of work.
Easy for you to say.
Well, yes, this is, this event is a tremendous amount of work, and I think that they are really, you know, this is, this is a request that's been put in front of us. It's a, it's an event that is not being, that is being done because people think it's good for Bennington, and it's a request that's been put in front of us. I do think that the board's position should be that there needs to be adequate policing there regardless of who pays for it. So Stuart, to the safety concerns that Jeanne raised, you know, I think one way or the other-
I don't disagree.
We need to have police presence there. I think the question we're dealing with is who pays for that? And one thing we could do is we could just have a motion, we could just have a motion to close the street and let the town manager continue to work out everything else.
I would be inclined to make that motion and hope that in conversation, we can come to a reasonable accommodation. So I would make that motion. That School Street is be closed for the 19th of September, 2020?
Yes, yes, yes. It's School Street.
That's, it's School, did I say School Street? I hope so.
You did. And you were correct.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we now have a motion on the floor to close School Street, September 19th, 2010, from 8:00 till 7:00 p.m. for the food truck festival, and that's the end of the motion. Is there further board conversation? Was that seconded? Did somebody second it?
Yeah. I would really encourage that conversation that I think needs to take place. So that's between the organizers and the town, and if we could have some readback in the not-too-distant future, that would be really helpful.
Okay. So I think, Stuart, you're getting a sense of where the board lands on this, and yet we're not wanting to shut the door entirely if you come up with some clever thinking or-
I should note, though, that if people with a liquor license are participating in this event and not controlling the crowds within their designated areas, they are putting their license on the line. It's not up to the Bennington Police Department to patrol those facilities. It's up to the licensed caterer. That's their responsibility.
That's true. That's correct. That's true. Okay. We have a motion on the floor, Sam. I'm just going to go directly to a vote on this. I'm sorry about that. We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any further board discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So go ahead, Stuart, and do that closing.
Thank you.
We're sorry not to get the full police request in, but-
Sarah, something to say?
Yes, I believe we had a, there was a- Sarah Parrott, I'm part of the food truck festival. I believe we had a part of another request in there that was School Street and School to Pleasant. No, I'm sorry, Pleasant to-
I didn't read it properly, yes.
School Street from-
Yes, it was-
Thank you. Could you amend?
Yes.
We could vote on that again if you'd like to, but close School Street from Maine to Pleasant.
Yeah.
Is that the part that you were talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The board-
Oh, because we just said close, close School Street?
Yeah.
From, okay, from Maine to Pleasant.
From Maine to Pleasant.
Yeah, we didn't say where.
I said, I'm sorry, I said that incorrectly. It would be to Silver, School, to Maine-
From Maine to Pleasant.
And then, and then to-
Silver Street?
Silver Street as well.
Yes.
No, no, wait, wait.
We don't have that on our thing, so I don't-
That might have been in the very, that might have been in the very first email that came in, but when you clarified, you only mentioned School Streets, so I ran with that, so.
That might be in the request that we sent you initially.
That didn't happen this past year. Main Street was open.
Correct, correct. That might be in the first request.
Well, then that would, that would necessitate closing Main Street from the four corners to Silver Street.
No, I'm sorry. It would be from Silver Street to School Street, for that clarification.
Just closing that portion of Main Street as well?
Yes, that was, I believe that was in the initial, that was it.
You could, but it would mean-
That was what-
Closing it four corners.
Essentially, yes. Yes, you would be closing it from the four corners all the way up to Silver Street or Valentine.
Which would mean greater police presence.
Over to Valentine.
Because you ought to have a cop at the four corners directing traffic.
Yeah.
That's expensive.
So I think we need more time and more clarity on this, Stuart.
We've approved this, and we'll get together with them and try to figure out-
Bring it back to us if you need an amended-
We'll do it.
Okay. I'm sorry about that.
I'm sorry. I wasn't clear that that's what the second, the first request was.
Okay. Sam, I'm just going to move on at this point.
The amount of safety is just-
Yep.
The safety of crossing the-
Yep, okay. Safety is paramount. Stuart, what's your next?
The next is the ladder truck purchase. As you know, the Fire Department Ladder Truck Committee has completed the bid process. I gave you, I think, a copy of the three bids that were received. The ultimate selection was by Lakes Region Fire Apparatus, which is a New Hampshire company. The truck would be an HME ladder truck at a bid price of $1,067,655, which is below the voter-approved bond amount of 1.2 million. And I'm looking for you to authorize me to sign the agreement, which I placed in the packet, allowing us to proceed. The truck will take approximately 12 months to build. The impact probably will not hit our budget until FY '22, a year from now, so it will not be included in this particular budget that's coming to you soon.
So, okay. Yep, so we have, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Stuart, any conversation? I guess I would start by just saying this $1,006,765 is a lockdown figure. There's no other costs that get built into this, or this is a-
This is the bid price. Now, if there are change orders that are developed, those kinds of things, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suspect that there would be too many. The way this process works is the Fire Department's Ladder Truck Committee works very closely with the selected vendor to make sure that when we sign a contract that we have a lockdown price. This vendor, Lakes Region Fire Apparatus, has also indicated a willingness to consider our truck in trade, and the Fire Department has asked that even after the ladder truck is received, that we be able to hold on to our existing truck for some 60 days afterwards so that we familiarize ourselves with the new vehicle. Everything now is digital, it's electronic, it's much different. Fire Department could probably go on at length about the advantages to a new vehicle compared to what we are currently working with. But yes, this would be the contract price.
Okay. So this board, the motion on the floor, you know, we, as we know from having taken this vote, it would be eventually the only fire truck serving this whole area, the only ladder truck serving this whole area, right?
Manchester has a ladder truck. Housit Falls has a ladder truck as well.
Okay. But this Bennington, this sort of Greater Bennington area-
The Greater Bennington, this is the ladder truck, yes.
This is the ladder truck. It was approved by the voters, easily approved. It is under the amount that the voters approved, and our Fire Department works awfully hard, and they don't ask for very much. So I would ask the board if we'd let, if we're ready to take a vote on this, if there's any other conversation. Perhaps I'm leaving the witness, but I would say all in favor of authorizing the manager to sign the sales agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That is unanimous?
Thank you.
Just one quick question, just so that's out in public in case anybody, is this, that was the low bid as well, was it?
Yes.
Not?
Yes.
Yes. People should know.
Yes.
In addition, the board has requested that staff come up with a recreational priority list, so to speak. We have begun that process, and we hope to be ready to present at the January 27th Select Board Meeting. It's a relatively amazing to me, but it's a very extensive list of recreational opportunities that we have developed over the last many years. So it's, I think it'll be surprising when you start thinking about how many opportunities there are here in Bennington for recreational activities.
That's great. And I did meet with John Lapsen, the Chair of the Trustees, of the North Bennington Trustees, and I've asked him to come to that meeting and to sort of participate a little bit with us in that-
Great.
-as we have this conversation, because North Bennington and Bennington are one on this, and we need to work together, so.
The other thing that I presented to you, and it was raised earlier in the evening, as we looked forward to the upcoming annual meeting, I think it's appropriate for the board to take advantage of the charter changes that were approved and put the local option sales tax on the ballot for consideration by the voters. Here, I'm looking at only the local option sales tax, not the rooms and meals, and not the alcohol tax, which are also available to you through the charter amendment, and I leave that to you to decide. But I went on to the website of the Vermont Tax Department, and in 2018, Bennington's retail sales, and these are the ones that are not considered exempt from taxation, was over $140 million. And now these sales, yes, they're local people who are paying these, making these purchases. There are also people from surrounding communities, Shetesh, Sashbury, Pownell, Woodford, Housit Falls, Cambridge, Greenwich, Williamstown, people who are coming into this community using our roads, our infrastructure, to do their shopping, and the local option sales tax allows us an opportunity to ask them to help us pay for some of these things. And $140 million in sales, if those numbers are fully qualified for the sales tax option, would generate $980,000 for Bennington. That's 70%. The other 30% goes back to the state and is used to bolster the local pilot program, which is the payment-in-lieux of tax program that the state has for buildings. And who hosts the most state office buildings and buildings in- And who hosts the most state office buildings and buildings in Bennington County? The town of Bennington. So we would benefit twice by this, by increased revenue. And what this would allow us to do, when we talk about looking into the future, we could set aside a couple hundred thousand dollars a year for recreational capital facilities, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year for other capital, equipment and infrastructure improvements, another 100,000 or 200,000 for marketing. Pulling those funds out of the operating budget and allowing them to be set on an annual basis by this board to be determined, and then you still have another 300,000 or 400,000 left that you could dedicate to some other purchase or perhaps reduce the tax rate, which goes to Nancy White's objection. We could actually bring our tax rate down with the use of these funds. And people who do not live in Bennington, people who are not property owners in Bennington, help us pay for these things. And it would allow us, I think, to consider such things as resident, non-resident fees for the recreation center, and maybe those come closer together because now we have participation from the residents of other communities. There's a whole host of things that could be done with these funds. And I would just ask you to think, as we move through the budget process, will this be the time?
Thank you, Stuart. Those are good thoughts, and let's not take it up tonight because it's not on the agenda as a unwarranted topic, so no board discussion about it tonight. But we look forward to hearing more about that during budget time. And I like your notion of putting it to the voters and seeing, seeing what the voters want to do. What else is on your list?
Well, PFOA, the projects that are currently underway are now moving into winter shutdown period. Contracts eight and nine, the bid opening is scheduled for the afternoon of December 12th, so that's just around the corner. And eight and nine cover the East Road, Chapel Road area of Bennington that does not currently have municipal water. Negotiations on the Morgan Spring Delivery System have essentially ceased because we're moving into the part of the season where there's no construction imminent, and deliveries begin to drop off during this time of year as well. And just the wastewater treatment upgrade, there's not been much activity on the opioid lawsuit, although I understand Brattleboro has now joined. The project out at the wastewater treatment facility is moving towards winter shutdown. It will be very brief winter shutdown, sometime December to January. But even though substantial completion will most likely still occur in February of 2020, there will have to be some cleanup and finish work done later in the spring when, when the weather warms slightly and allows for topsoil to be spread, for grass to be seeded, those kinds of things. So we're on track with the project. It seems to be moving along at a, at a pace that will get us finished by the date specified. And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, Stuart. We appreciate your, all that you've got going on and your summaries. So upcoming agenda, I'd remind everybody that on December 16th, we're going to meet at the same place, same time, but we're only going to do warrants. It should be a quick meeting. Nevertheless, we'll still hold it here. We're going to cancel the meeting on 12/23/19. Our next regularly scheduled meeting would be January 13th, where we may or may not hear an audit presentation. And then on January 27th, we're looking for a workforce development topic and possibly some IACP report out at that point.
Probably, perhaps in February for the IACP report.
Maybe in February, okay. So in the meantime, Stuart, we know, this time of year, I always get a little knot in my stomach because I know that you're going to start calling us in on Saturdays for budget work. I wonder if it's too early to schedule that and to start getting on people's calendar?
We already have ten minutes scheduled, the fourth and the 11th, from eight to noon. And we have also reserved the 18th, which is the third Saturday, in case we don't finish our work.
Don't even think it.
And we will present, on the 27th, we will be presenting the warning because that must be posted, I think, by either January 29th or February 1st, it's within that timeframe.
January 4th and 11th, eight to 12, in the town office.
Well, we've been holding them here.
Here, okay.
Because they have been televised, and we bring in the department heads to make presentations so the public gets to understand all of the nuances.
And this year, I think it would be entirely appropriate if we had pancakes and sausage.
I don't know. Bringing you Vermont's done pretty well for us in the past.
Very. Looked good. I bet you they know how to make pancake and sausage.
Okay, that's all we've got for agenda. We have other business. Is there anything?
I just want a clarification. Stuart, did you say that this tax would exclude?
No, we're not, Nancy, we're not talking about this tonight. We're not, we're not having this conversation tonight.
I just have a question to clarify.
You can ask him afterwards, okay? We've moved on to a different.
You've had six months to bring this up. We don't have another meeting in December.
You may talk to Stuart after this meeting about it.
But this is something citizens need to understand.
We're not talking about it right now, Nancy.
Did he say the restaurants and the motels and the inns aren't going to charge this tax? Just the retailers?
We are not talking about this right now. Please sit down.
But it's your job to let the citizens understand this.
And we will. We're on a unwarranted topic, but we're not discussing it tonight.
If you're going to put this on the ballot in March, we need to have discussions. These discussions should have started earlier than tonight. I just want clarified, are the motels and the restaurants going to be charging this tax along with the retailers?
We are not having this conversation tonight, Stuart. I'm sorry. I believe that you've spoken your piece, but I am not, we are not having a conversation, Nancy, about this topic. It's an unwarranted topic.
And it should, it should have been a warranted topic, that's all I'm saying. Citizens have the right to know what you're going to propose charging them for. It's our right to know.
I agree completely, but there's a process that we're following here.
We're not making a decision on it.
We're not making a decision.
This is something you should have found a staff at the last minute.
We are not dropping anything.
You've been very powerful and not transparent for five years.
Okay, you're out of order. I'm going to ask that we move on to other business here. Jeanne, have you got anything for us tonight?
I do not.
Bruce?
I don't know. This is something that we talked about in one of our past, recent past meetings, and that is recognizing employees before they leave the planet. And I want to take the time to recognize some people who have dedicated quite a number of years to the town. Among them, John Diamore, who's been with the town for 23 years. Thank you, John. Stephen Langley's also been here for 23 years. Thank you for your service. And Pearl Burby, who's been here for four years. And Stu, I want you to keep your eye on that one. Pearl, now Pearl's a good friend of mine. Michelle Farrar has been here for eight years. Thank you, Michelle. Tammy Royd for two years, Tanner Garrity for two years, and Adrian Santorgangelo. Thank you all for your service to the town.
Nice, Jim. I know you're angling for better treatment from Santa.
Yeah, I know what I'm getting at.
Jeanne?
Oh, I have two things. This Wednesday night at CCB, there is a Startup 802 showcase. It is, starts at 6:30 and goes to 8:00, and local entrepreneurs will be there to share their ideas and get feedback from you. So it's a real, it's a lovely opportunity for you to come and see what people are thinking about and to help connect with the appropriate people in town a little more. Then, on Saturday, there is a toy jam at the Bennington Area Makers, and that is at 239 Main Street, which is, hopefully James isn't listening, the old Laflams.
Oh, yeah, he hates that.
Yeah, he hates that. But the toy jam is an opportunity to bring old, broken, and neglected toys and take them apart and see what makes them tick. And just, I will just say, the adult junk jam, they took apart kids' light-up shoes. If you've never taken apart a light-up heel, it is so cool. It has a little microprocessor in it. I mean, it's amazing. So, so it's an opportunity to just start playing. So bring your kids, it's a family event, and just take things apart, okay? It's from 10:00 to 12:00 this Saturday at BAM.
Okay, great. Well, listen, we have a need to go into executive session now, executive session on a personnel matter. I would like a motion to go into executive session, knowing that we will not be taking any motion in that session.
Or after.
Or after. So may I have a motion, please?
I will move.
Okay, and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, two-minute break, and then we're going into executive session.